Morning, everybody. We begin our meetings with the post-pleasance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Questions reading? This is Chris Scott.
It could be.
Fire. To start a little bit later. In the room, we have. We have Kendra. Niall, Dale, Dale.
There it is. Yep.
I gotta remember my brother's name, so. You've got Jason Henry, you've got Allison Posky. Um, Leila. I'm guessing. You've got Gabe. Ernie Aaron's room on the chair. We're gonna stop with our opening to the awards. Computer.
Um, so I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review or evaluate the proposals in return with recommendations.
Second.
Okay, this is a motion. Second discussion.
This is the least expensive. I'm sorry.
So on the motion, Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
I vote yes. And I apologize, I didn't go out to Zoom to make introductions, I skipped that, I apologize. We have Captain Conway. We have Captain Van. I don't, I can't really say who.
Commissioner, we have Lieutenant Cunningham and the Sheriff in here as well.
And the chaplain.
And we have our chaplain with us too.
Great, and we've got someone, James Green, as well. So I apologize for skipping over, but we should be all set now. Vinyl latex gloves.
I move to authorize the senior director of facilities planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If there were none on the motion, Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
You should foil.
Yes.
I vote yes. Motorola equipment.
I move to authorize the High Sheriff to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
I vote yes. Rewards for the municipal.
Oh, you gotta actually open.
Thank you, Leila.
Oy box, fine.
Wow.
Wow.
It's like Christmas. What'd you get?
This is, I don't know, yours.
Gloves?
Yeah, to take back for Captain. Some won't go to.
They really are. It's more common, you know, it's curious, is it more common in first order to have the physical opening as opposed to?
This one requires.
Yes.
Lips.
Oh.
I gotta bring my.
Bring it again.
My muscle laughing.
He's a little bit on the language next time.
Please send samples.
We used to get a lot of those.
Was this for the furniture? Oh, for the gloves.
Okay, we all set?
Yes.
All right, so now we're on four. The award of the municipal building, furniture, and artwork.
I move to award the proposal, thank you, Allison, to award the proposal for for municipal furniture building and artwork to WB Mason for an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents, as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Um, a couple of things. What did we generally bunch it? This is gonna be what the plan was.
This is below what we were expecting, okay, actually, from a couple of years ago.
And the idea was to utilize existing fund balance from much earlier capital fund projects for this. And yeah, it was about this, it was about half of what the initial.
But you did under.
Far back estimate it was, so.
That's really good news. Great.
There's still some equipment, you know, there doesn't come out of the person's, I don't think, ready because all this is really good.
Really great. That's great news. It's always nice to see. Half, I mean, that's.
It was, it was a good deal. I know you guys evaluated it, because when I first looked at it, it's one point seven million dollars for WB Mason. That's a lot of paper. But yeah, it was, I think it was a. I take it head on upstairs.
On the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
You should go do it.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Fort care renewals.
I will move to award the proposal for Fort Care Renewables to Bright Centra, an amount not to exceed nine thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty cents, as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT.
Exactly. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
I vote yes.
This probably didn't even have to come before us, because it's under ten thousand.
That's right.
Oh, that's right, no rules.
There were some that were over.
I know, I see why you did it. Threshold, but.
I know, it's so close.
I know.
Better safe than sorry. Award for the O three six five subscriptions.
I move to award proposal for O three sixty-five subscriptions to Tommy TQL for an amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars, as recommended by the senior director of facilities planning and IT and the IT manager.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
At least expensive.
It, it, it's the best deal, but a hundred thousand dollars for using that software.
Licensing.
Licensing to just, I wish there was a.
Alternative.
Just an alter, you know, but I don't think there is. Yeah.
On the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're on to the consent agenda.
Um, I move to approve the July eleventh, twenty four, twenty twenty four public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any additions, subtractions, anything anyone wants to change?
Thank you, Leila.
No, good job.
If none on the motion, Commissioner. Gado.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On payroll.
I move to approve payroll expense in one million, in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-three cents for the period ending July thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. On the motion.
We're a little higher, is that some?
Well, so, so this has non-union colas.
Okay.
That's the almost three percent for all the non-union positions. And then all union increases also going to play for the second payroll in July as well. And we got two unions that had the larger year one increases too, so.
So we're gonna.
This'll be more than norm.
The norm, yeah.
This is the new norm.
The new.
Yeah.
That was just good. Thank you.
Um, on the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
Yes. We're on to reports. Do they, commissioners have anything they wanna add? Um, Commissioner Gado.
There is one thing that I would like to suggest that we promote, and that is program that Kathy Stacy, Registry of Deeds has for property fraud alert. Um, I've seen it before, and I've been telling a few people about it, and I don't think people are aware of it. I'd like to put that, uh, some kind of addition on the front page of our website, uh, letting people know that this free service to, for any changes that go on in the Registry of Deeds for liens to your homes or to, um, a, a, a transfer. And every time I hear this, um, title lock advertisement on the radio or such, I, I, you know, I recall that we do this for free. Uh, and it's the same basic kind of notification. I would really like to promote an effort to get. I think every property owner in Rockham County ought to be signed up for this. It costs nothing, and it only, you know, helps them out. And I think it's a service that people aren't aware of. Um, so maybe we could do something on the.
Website?
On the website, you know, the front page of the website, the button of some sort, the property fraud alert.
Just a little, little clarification. If you go to the Registry of Deeds webpage, she already has it there. The only reason why I know is because being in real estate, I go on that site, look at deeds all the time. But if you wanted to share it on another page, that's fine too.
Robin had something in the.
So we, I was about to say that the Registry of Deeds website is not managed by us.
Right.
Um, but we could, on the Registry of Deeds tab on our website.
Yes.
We could probably point that out anyway.
That'd be great.
All right, Allison, we go.
And we have the quarterly newsletter that's coming out, so we can maybe ask Captain, give us some information or find it and put it in now, so just for us and our staff to, to give them awareness.
Because the staff is gonna spread the word among residents, so I, really, I think there should be some kind of little button that says, sign up for property fraud alert with the Registry of Deeds, and then just point that button directly to the Registry of Deeds. I know it's, you're right, it's, it's Kathy's program, it's a Registry of Deeds program, and, um, they deserve all the credit for it, but I wanna promote it because it's one of those things that, uh, is a good benefit to the county and, um,
I just wanna.
Wanna make people aware.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, because some, some of these programs, you get like free basic service, and then they have enhancements that you pay. If it's a pay type thing where you're asking, you have to pay for enhancement, I may have a problem with that. If it's completely free, then I agree.
The, the, this doesn't involve paying anybody anything. Kathy, the Registry of Deeds has already subscribed to the service. It's free to all residents. All I'm suggesting are links on our website that points to the service.
Yeah.
Um, very simple.
Yeah.
And newsletters, all of our newsletters ought to have it on there too.
It's not a bad idea. I, uh, I had a client that, um, got scammed land, they owned land. They were from Virginia, and they had land in Derry, and they got scammed. And came very close, it actually got recorded. It got closed and recorded. But they found it, and, uh, it was a mess trying to unravel it. It was, uh, the FBI was involved, police stations in Derry, Brentwood, and, uh, uh, Virginia were all in that mix, but it was, it was crazy, so.
Well, that's my topic for today.
I have nothing to do with it. Uh, let's go on to. Skip over. Okay, so we're gonna go next to County Attorney's Office, Captain Conway, fiscal year twenty twenty four equitable sharing agreement.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty three equitable sharing agreement and certification for the Rockham County Attorney's Office, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the county attorney.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
This is just a, uh, annual, um, sharing agreement that we, uh, sign. It comes before us, and it's relative to money that's forfeited, forfeited.
Drug money.
Yeah. On the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
I vote yes. Human resources. This is the continuation, excuse me, continuation of pickup bonus.
I move to approve continuing of the pickup bonus for lieutenants and assistant superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, as recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh.
Discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Um. It would seem that we're not using this, this isn't happening too much. I'm questioning why we need to. It was obviously a change, uh, in our contract, uh, because it was the overtime was needing to be covered by senior management too often, and they deserve something for doing that, especially if it's happening a lot. Uh, it would seem to me that it's a normal function of the business to occasionally, you know, have to, uh, work a little extra. But I, I'd just like to entertain the discussion. I'm, I'm questioning whether it's appropriate to continue this, uh, or if, if it is, why isn't it just written into the contract?
Look, to take, they have a contract.
Yeah.
This is. Yeah, but in your contract that was just signed by the, for the county NCU, it does say in there that these positions can cover.
Pickup.
Pickup bonuses. If, after, it, way it works is you have to exhaust all the, of the NCU contract, the team's just contract, and if nobody takes it, and there's a mandate, coming, to a mandate, not volunteers, when they're mandated, then, then those people that are on non-union, which is five of them, can be offered a position i- if they want to do it to alleviate mandate.
That's right.
Um, and just so you know, from the six eighteen to one twenty-seven, um, there were twenty of them, they were picked up for about seventy-five hours. And currently, this year, it's been used four times, so, uh, for twenty hours. So what that does though is, when somebody comes in, a lot of times it's for a back half of third shift, without somebody to go home. But it's by mandate. If they can go home, that means they can go to sleep and come in for the next shift and not bang out and create a load. So it's still been very helpful to, when we have, especially we have constant ops, observations, hospital duties, all those other issues that go on, not just when we're short-staffed, when we have those come up, one spot of a cost enough is twenty-two spots of overtime per week. So depending what comes up. So last staff will take the overtime, but then it will filter up to a point where people are mandated, and a lot of it's on weekends, um, they mandated, and then it happens to be mandated, but this alleviates self-pressure.
And.
So. Your recommendation is that we should extend this?
Yes.
The other thing is, it has to exhaust before we get to these individuals, it has to exhaust all the COs to get to.
Before it goes to.
And all the supervisors. No, it's not just, it's just the non-union.
Right. So this is just for the non-union?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because everything else is in, is contracted.
Correct. Okay, I'll look with that.
On the motion, Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services.
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated July first, twenty twenty four, to Easter Seals for an additional client at an amount of eighty dollars per day for up to three days per week.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I mean, I think this is where we need to start having a discussion of, um, utilization of. You really didn't flesh out, um, using Easter Seals versus, uh, you know, Silverthorn. And my concern here is that if Easter Seals frontloads, we're going to be exhausting all of our, you know, a lot of money towards Easter Seals, and we're not going to be supporting as much as we should the Medicaid residents. Well, that's my concern here, and which is why, one of the concerns I have in the sense of not allocating, in approach of not allocating any money. Um, so I, I feel it is appropriate to have a generalized allocation and to have a more, you know, if we wanna. This person sounds like they're gonna be looking for two more days, for a full five days.
Right.
We don't know, you know, we have not a lot of information about ability to pay, or some of the, you know, the, obviously because they're not, they don't take Medicaid, so. Um, I, um, you know, accept that we have a little bit about this individual's personally her income, but she's living with a family member, so I, I think we should generally, I'm at this age, and I'm in support of it, but I really think we need a more of a discussion. I, I think we need to allocate research money, and we need to have a better plan in place in terms of, is there additional support documentation, financial affidavits that we want, at least for Easter Seals to, um, so we're making a decision about who the need is to support. These are all concerns I have. I don't know how.
I, I'm just, oh, go ahead.
No.
I was just kinda concerned because the residents aren't gathered, and so I'm thinking it's probably the same travel distance to Manchester as it is to Salem, and is it a question that Silverthorn is just bought, it'll be a room, or? You see what I'm saying? I mean, we could sit there and say, we're not gonna do Easter Seals, but if you can go to Silverthorn, because it's gonna save some money, it's the same distance pretty much of travel. Uh, but I'm just curious, that's all.
I'm, I'm in support of this, uh, it was, I didn't wanna interrupt.
No, 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 I'm good.
I, I, I'm, I'm in support of this request, but it did concern me that they were automatically in that request, saying we may be asking for two more days for this, uh, particular resident, and I don't know, uh, I think that their level of evaluations of a financial need is completely different from what's going on at Silverthorn, and I think our intention was to invite both, uh, managers from, uh, Easter Seals and Silverthorn to come in and visit us. Uh, that was, we just discussed it last week, so I'm sure that arrangements haven't been made, but I would look forward to, uh, having, especially the Easter Seals, because it almost seems like we're paying the whole boat here, and no, and there's no sharing, and I, and again, I'm not against it, but I, I would like to get a better understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, as far as scheduling those meetings, who, who, who would do that in this group?
Leila.
Okay, so I don't.
I assumed it was, um, someone who deals with A and B C, it was either, I assume it's gonna be either Irene or Jessica Wenda.
Okay, but they need to, they need to you to get it on the agenda.
Right, yes, and it done.
Okay, so has somebody reached out to?
No, that's why I'm asking, because it's last week, we had a little conversation, and I'm like, oh, I think maybe Leila's doing it, and nobody was sure.
Okay.
So hence, nobody's reached out to anybody yet.
Okay.
But I can make sure if somebody does, that it's not that you'd like.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing it up, though, because it's like, it's always like the absence of communication is what it did.
Right.
All right, so.
Yeah, I'll make sure we reach out by the end of the week.
Yeah.
And if there is certain.
They can Zoom meeting if they want.
Okay, so you'd want it during the.
During our regular meeting, yeah.
Um, we chuck hands.
All right, just a quick financial aspect of it, so three days a week at eighty dollars per day is two forty a week. If that was over the course of fifty weeks, that is about twelve thousand dollars.
So this.
I'm just big jumping it out.
That's, that's ten percent of our, more twelve percent.
I'm just.
Right.
And so this is really my issue, which I.
It's a legitimate concern. We need to speak with them and find out what's up.
At this application, we are gonna be able to, at this rate, help only nine residents in Rockham County at this, at this application. And so that's a real, that's the bigger picture that.
And that's at the three day, right, not the five?
That's three, right, yeah.
So, you know, it could be further discussion where we sit there and create a limit, say, this is the limit, you know?
Well, maybe we offer them forty dollars a day.
Right, so we should have more discussion.
But that's what I've been saying the whole time, we need to.
Well, I thought, I misunderstood. I thought you wanted to allocate a certain dollar amount.
Well, I do. I, I think it's not mutually exclusive, because we, I mean, we, like, we're only at the amount we have, uh, budgeted. What it's revealing is how few, the objective, as I see it, is to help as many residents as possible, and to try to, with a prioritization to the Medicaid, um, residents, because those are the ones that have the least access and, you know, greater need to, ability to access.
Well, why don't we table this until we get an answer?
Right.
From, you know, we have a discussion from Easter Seals and find out, I mean, is eighty dollars a day the full rate? And why are we paying the full rate when we're only paying twenty-five dollars a day, uh, at Silverthorn, although Silverthorn, I, I, I'm gonna go check, because I'm in Salem. Uh, but I, I think they're full. Last I checked, they were, they were maxed out. We need another provider.
Right.
All right, so do you wanna make a motion table?
A motion table.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's non-abatible, so on the motion, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we're on, um.
I think that'll help.
Yeah.
Facilitate getting somebody from ESSS to come join us.
Probably.
They'll be more urgent.
This is the BIL, HPN, ACO skilled nursing facility affiliate agreement.
I move to approve the BIL, HPN, ACO skilled nursing facility affiliate agreement for the period of one year. The automatic rule is for successive one-year terms, and authorize this chair to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, I'd like someone to tell me what this is. I mean, I've read it, I, there's a lot of acronyms that I don't get.
Right.
I, I, like, I, just overall, is this outside care or?
No, so I, and I saw the emails going back and forth, and I just figured it would be a lot easier, you know, to, to explain it in terms that weren't all the, the medical, you know, jargon that. So what this is, is if anybody is familiar with, um, the waiver that we had during COVID, it allowed people that didn't have a three-day hospital stay, you have to have a three-day hospital stay to qualify for your Medicare benefit, Med A. If you don't have that stay, then it's very difficult to admit to a facility, you'd have to come in as private pay. So what this allows.
Here or at a hospital?
Here.
Here.
So somebody's at the hospital, say, somebody goes to the hospital, they had a fall at home, and they have a UTI. The hospital isn't gonna keep somebody like that for three days. They may give them one dose of an IV antibiotic, and then switch their meds over to oral, and then send them home. But the family member or the patient may live alone, and they're not safe enough to go home yet. We wouldn't have an option in the past to take them, because we would need that three overnight stay in the hospital. It will allow residents who need assistance out in the community that don't qualify for that to come to us without us meeting that standard.
And stay for three days?
Instead, right, the hospital.
Save the whole people.
The hospital's gonna discharge them home, and they're not gonna have anybody at home to care for them. Most likely, what happens is they don't get the care that they need in the home, they end up going back to the hospital for another reconstitution, and their illnesses compound.
And their three days have to start over.
Exactly. And sometimes when they sit in the hospital, even get that IV for that first day, and they stay overnight into midnight, they're in what's called an obs bed, an observation bed, they're not even admitted, so they don't even get one night. So what it allows is residents around the community that really aren't healthy enough or fit enough, or have the resources in the community to go home and be safe and get well, they could come here and go up to F two for like a skilled stay, but they're not under their skilled benefit against weed. So it definitely serves the community when they don't have the resources and the, and the needs in place.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Yeah, it does nothing really but benefit the residents and the community. Instead of going home to an unsafe place or with unsafe caretakers at home, they're able to come here.
Good.
And then, um, I just had, where, where did we land? So in terms of the, um, liability insurance as well as, which I, I see why it's not really that pertinent.
Right, yeah.
But mutual, do we land on mutual indemnification?
So, um, I have, um, an email here from, um, that, that Elaine gave me about the liability insurance, and it wouldn't, it, liability insurance covers for direct care that's being provided here, and they're not providing direct care.
Yeah, so it's not necessary.
Right, that's what I come into play. So I know that there's some stuff that Elaine is following up with, some corrections in here and, and different things, um, that she had no concerns of. Uh, she said that she could speak to it further, but there, she's working back and forth with them, and they're working out the, um, agreement.
Okay, so with respect to, and then the, it sounds like, from what I read from the email chain, it's mutualized indemnification.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good, further discussion? If none, I'll, I'll take the vote, Commissioner Foil.
Yes.
Commissioner Gado.
Yes.
I vote yes. Sheriff's Office Controlled Equipment Request, if I was hearing.
Disgusting.
Discussion, so, um, who wants to bring up this topic? Sheriff, are you there?
Yeah.
So what are we looking at on this?
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna have Lieutenant Cunningham, um, explain to you, uh, what we're looking at, and, um, I'll give him the floor.
How you doing, Lieutenant Cunningham, with the Sheriff's Office? So recently, I drew up a proposal to, uh, use equitable sharing funds to purchase a drone instead of drone program for the Sheriff's Office. Um, the, uh, purpose for the drone would be to, um, just allow deputies on the field that are running, uh, in our tracks or searching for loss of missing persons, uh, or searching for people that are out in the woods, or just overall have an aerial view of a scene. Uh, the drone would allow us that, um, resource and just provide additional safety and security for the officers on the ground. Um, so I am looking to use, uh, eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, eighty cents from equitable sharing, uh, to start this, um, program.
And commissioners, this particular form, the, um, Department of Justice considers drones, it's on their controlled equipment list. So basically, this is a request to them, uh, to make this purchase.
And I, and I think it's a great asset for the, for our office to have, have this drone, that they will, uh, enhance this in law enforcement.
Definitely.
So does this, uh, the eight thousand dollar, or eighty-six hundred, does that, that's just for the purchase of the equipment? Or what about, you know, what I heard is a droned pro, like, uh, drone team? And so what does that entail for any overtime for training or other, is there other costs associated that are not here?
Sure, so the, so the drone and the equipment that we need, uh, to start this program is that eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, eighty-eight cents. Uh, we will have two pilots that operate the drone, well, the, uh, no, a pen pilot and a secondary pilot, uh, as well as, um, so they will go and get their part one oh seven license, which will allow them to, uh, fly the drone according to the FAA standards. That funding for that will be used out of the equitable sharing, but it's not something that we need to get, um, this type of approval for, the money's already there and available. The, that cost together is roughly seven hundred dollars to get both of them licensed. Um, so that is something completely different, still come out of the same fund of money, it's just not listed as a controlled equipment that we need approval for, we're allowed to just draw for training for that. Um, so, uh, so that would, that would be a secondary thing, obviously, it's all encompassed in our, um, in our program. Um, but we're, on top, they would also have two, um, visual observers, which the FAA likes to have, so you have a, a pilot flying as well as a visual observer, there's no license needed for this, it's just like, uh, on-the-job training that they would have, uh, that actually watches the drone in the sky just to provide, uh, just secondary surveillance, so.
But it's definitely a good program. I know that. But it's definitely a good program. I know that Wish Smith, uh, has a drone over there. They're working very well with that, too.
And so if you need a drone, is that, but that raises a good point. Are you able to, like, reach out to other agencies now in terms of?
So for us, so the, the reason for us to have this, um. We would be, uh, the equipment that we have would be available to the, you know, obviously the other times around us. Um, it is becoming something that's needed more and more. Uh, the drone we're looking for also has thermal imaging, so if there's a nighttime scene. If we're running a canine track, we can have a drone up to provide coverage on the ground. In order for, if we don't have that, we have to request another agency to come and assist us. In the past, we're looking at, oh, well over an hour plus. Uh, to find that resource and have it respond to the scene. If we have that resource here in the Sheriff's Office. Um, it's immediately available to us and we don't have to rely on another agency to provide that coverage for us.
Plus it's available to all the other agencies that are in Rockham County.
Right.
It's a two, it's a tool not just for us, but it's a tool for everybody in the county.
Early comment?
Uh, in my opinion, I think this is, this sounds like a great program and I'm particularly interested in it because. Of the thermal, uh, imaging and, uh, infrared, uh, camera that it's attached to it. Because that's gonna help when any, uh, immediate search or rescue sheriff's department's gonna be able to respond faster than, uh, probably. Anyone else, uh, any other agency in the area. So I, I, in general, I'm in favor of pursuing this.
Further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes, what are we vote, wait, hold on, what are we voting on?
Um, there's no.
This was.
Oh, sorry, it's just discussion, yeah, you're right, okay.
So we'll wait to.
So, so what do you need from us? Will, will a motion be coming forward?
So, um, we had.
So, part of this, so the major head asked us, um, to kind of put forward a request. One of the requirements in the packet is, um. In the certification stating that our agency, um, has notified the local community of this request. He thought a public hearing might. Be something that would satisfy that unless you have another idea. I know, uh, Leila had written back to me about that there's a cost associated with that. Um, if there's another method you can think of, we're certainly open to it.
Commissioner Coyle, how did you, um, when you guys had your, your, um, drone in Wish Smith? How did that get approved, you know, uh?
I'm not, it was predated my time, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
So.
What the process was.
Yeah, I guess we could schedule a public hearing if that's the, the guidelines that we need to go follow, so just to put it on a future agenda. Chuck.
So this quick thing, so, so anything that's equitable sharing. Those costs don't run through the general fund. They go through this special dedicated, special revenue fund that's drug forfeiture slash drug pass force.
Right.
And so, uh, we did have a case recently that was from Lee that that fund did receive a fair amount of revenue. So any expenses, though, including, I would think, any associated cost with the public hearing would come out of that.
Yeah.
Would be able to come out of that fund, I, I would think. You can correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine.
Yeah, I can certainly double check that in, uh, the, um, packet that we have, but I think that would be appropriate as long as it's okay to go through there.
Yeah, and what, what's the requirement? We had to post on three different places or something like that? One, one's obviously the website.
It needs, um, we need an ad, a legal notice and, uh, paper.
Like unit later, yeah, unit later.
It's a minimal box. It's like the minimal box.
So it may not be ready for next week, maybe a couple of weeks.
Yeah, it, it.
Whenever you.
Well, can we, can we hold on for a couple of weeks until we get our, our stuff together?
Yeah, we can move on.
That gives us plenty of time to make sure everything's all squared away.
That sounds like a good plan. Um, I think what it sounds to me is that everybody's, all the commissioners are in favor, so. Why don't you check into all that and we'll, we'll put it on a future agenda? Fiscal year twenty twenty-four equitable sharing agreement and certificate?
Yes, I moved to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three equitable sharing agreement and certification for the Rockham County Sheriff's Office and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second.
Motion you made and seconded, discussion? If not.
Different department.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, JAG grant M O U with Hampton Correction.
I move to, uh, approve the amended JAG grant M O U with the town of Hampton, authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second.
Motion's ready and seconded, let me discuss. Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Stop and head updates. Um, Michelle, start with you.
All right, so, um. COVID, uh, no further cases with COVID amongst residents. We did have one more staff member since the report last week, but it did not affect. She had not been in the building for seventy-two hours, so that was good. We didn't have to follow up with any contact tracing or anything. Um, I have been working with our infection prevention nurse to come up with a new, um, algorithm for COVID nineteen testing for residents because. Currently, we're testing any resident with any symptom of any sort and now we're kind of, because that was kind of the guidance from C S. So now we're looking at it closely and kind of saying they have to have two symptoms. We currently do have a respiratory kind of outbreak going on throughout the building, uh, combination of some of the pneumonias. Um, and just upper respiratory, so we're keeping a close eye on that. Um, I don't know where that's originated from. It's hard to track and trace. I don't know. It, it's weird to be having it.
No.
Yeah, at this time of the year, um, but I don't know. Um, I think it's out in the community as well, so, um. Anyways, we're really trying to keep a close eye on that. Obviously, getting residents treatment. Goal is to keep them here, but we have had to send a couple of people out for treatments. Um, I do, um, have to announce that Janice, our infection control nurse, did give her notice. Um, she is the contracted, uh, coverage for that position. She gave her notice last week. Her last day will be next Tuesday. So that system will be open. I've been working with Allison on getting, um, a replacement for her. And I do have two internal staff. I'm starting training with her to just kind of pick up where, um, she's gonna leave off next Tuesday. Until we are able to get a replacement online. Other than that, that's all.
So, good, Kendra.
Um, like Michelle said, um, assisted living is also experiencing a respiratory, um, kind of sickness that is going on with some of our residents. We did have to send a resident out to the hospital yesterday. Um, so like Michelle's team, we're closely tracking that over in assisted living as well. Um, occupancy remains high. We'll be fully occupied by the end of next Friday. Um, we did have our second annual coffee meeting yesterday, um, for quarter two, which was highly attended. Um, so thank you for everyone who attended that. And then we're still continuing on with the cleaning of the windows. Um, they had to delay over the weekend due to weather, but they are back and hope to finish that over the next five days.
Good, thank you. Jason Henry.
Oh, in-house currently at one fifty-seven. Actually, numbers keep going up, um. Still have a lot of pre-trial compared to sentence, so we're still not able to do a lot of work community stuff, just, you know, to stop around our building. Adult diversion numbers are also going up, so courts are. Lot more things are, a lot of movement going on within the courts right now. Um, next week, um, we are actually having our dishwasher, um, creative dishwasher being installed. And the old one being removed, which I need to bring forward as one of our assets that's gonna be removed. Um, it's not worth anything, so they're actually taking it away, so we don't have to bother June's department and stuff.
Call away service?
Yeah, all the services, so that'll be taken care of in there, but I'll bring, ask paperwork to bring forward to the commissioners to take care of that as well. Um, a couple of little things, if anybody listened to the news this morning, M P R, uh, they did a nice story on, um, pay. And how the private sector up their pay and the government sector has been way behind and now they're trying to catch up by leaps and bounds and raising people's pay. Where in Rockham County, we are ahead of the curve on government-wise, so I thought that was good. Now other places are trying to catch up and it was a big story about that today. Um, also, um.
Did it mention us in the story?
No, just in general. I mentioned you now, see? Uh. Interestingly, I got a, 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 um, Women in Law Enforcement Summit training that's gonna be coming up, then I'm gonna send a couple of staff members to. It's gonna train them how to, um. Specifically coach, mentor other females to become into leadership roles and those kinds of things. Um, this is the first of its kind. My goals, I'm gonna send, I'm going to be sending two or I'll come back and create a program, which we'll do internally and, and then. Hopefully I'll have it go to Merrimack County and be taught in a local area for other facilities to help female belonging and leadership roles. Um, so excited about that. I already talked to one of the staff members. She's very excited. So, um, and I've got an old, the former assistant superintendent at Merrimack was willing to also jump on help out and the new superintendent down there. Um, once I get the stuff up and running, so.
Right, it's great. I mean, we talked about in law enforcement thirty by thirty, right? Which is thirty percent of the staff, um, being women, um, in law enforcement by the year twenty thirty, and I think, uh, Rockham County has been. Pretty, uh, progressive and, um, I mean. You, you've done, uh, just outstanding job bringing more women in to. Law enforcement and from, and sort of just promoting my merit, but.
Yeah, it's just been a lot more insurance. I see a lot more female deputies that come on board, which has been fantastic. Um, speaking about that, again, they've been working with us. We have some cases going on with them right now that they're been doing well with, my, um, ended a month. Um, somebody's gonna come down and go over evidence collection to my supervisors, um, so right from the Sheriff's Department coming down to do some training.
Yeah, it's a good point, but the Sheriff's Department's too, we've noticed it incredibly as well.
Allison.
Hi, um, I'm just waiting on the contract for our workers' compensation. Thank you for approving that. Um, we have facilitated the grant writer interviews and offer was verbal offer and then the follow-up was. Um, sent out and, um, they grabbed onto it, so we're looking forward to having that on for Chuck and his group over there. Um, Ben, Katie, Kenan, Riley, um, Chuck and I met this past week to go over agency wages. Um, just to kind of drill down the two reports that H R is doing and then Ben is creating. It was good because some things were not evident by the two reports. We were able to kind of tweak that to figure out what might be missing and how we were coming up with different, um. Amounts, and we're gonna have another after the next paper. We're gonna. Create another run of the two reports, because Ben is creating rules and stuff like that, and we've, uh, really gone over. Riley's gone over the contracts really carefully about overtime and delineating some of the language there, so. Once we get that, I think we'll have a very comprehensive, on-point, um. Uh, production of a wage analysis each and every pay period, week one and week two, and then the whole pay period going forward.
Thank you.
So we're excited, no, we're excited about that. Um, Ben's terrific and Katie on my end for the, her excellence and her cell experiences really kind of. Helped out a lot, so, um, I do want to announce a fun thing because H R has to have fun things. Um, the ice cream emergency, um, truck will be arriving to your doorstep. The county attorney and registrar of deeds on August thirteenth from twelve to one. The sheriff's office and Department of Corrections will be August thirteenth from two to three thirty. And the nursing home, that will be for the nursing home assisted living, commissioners, finance office, human resources and phili- uh, facilities operations. Will be in the courtyard on August fifteenth from two to four. We will also have, um, scooped ice creams that we'll be delivering on those days as well. To those departments to freeze, um, over there for your third shift and weekenders. So we're excited. We're already locked into those dates and more stuff apply will be coming out that you can post around your department, so exciting times there. Thank you.
All right, Godu.
Good morning, um, also in facilities. We have been, um, really challenged by this weather. You can imagine, kind of, tsunami has been on the roof constantly. The poor H V A C guys are always in the heat when it's been terrible out. So we're really looking forward to this break. Um, we still have a few pieces of equipment that we're working really hard on. A unit in the Kyleall Building is one of them. Unfortunately, um, you know, the nursing home stuff had to plug to the top first. As well as the jail. We have some parts on order finally for the F block unit. So we're resetting it on an ongoing basis, but within a week or so, the parts should be in for that repair. So that's been, um, keeping us running.
Yeah.
Um, we have a lot of work coming up, especially at D O C this weekend where. D O C and the Sheriff's Department, actually, were, um, sealing and restriping the parking lot. It needs to be done to strip in particular as a safety issue, so we're really looking forward to getting the entire lot done lower and upper. Um, we have that huge water main repair coming up on the twenty-ninth. We went to porta potties. D O C is majorly poised as far as water on hand and, you know, um. We'll have all of our, our plumbers and as many employees as possible that can be helpful to keep that going. It should be. A good full day for that repair, because they've got to drain the entire building to do the repair. We are gonna take advantage of it and, um, we have a couple of other spots where we have repairs to be done. So we'll put in some valve valves where the system's drained and then we'll be able to isolate areas for repair going forward, so we're trying to maximize the outage while. Other than that, um, we're trying to get some hay and stoddy tomorrow. It looks like we have a break in the rains and, um, also.
Good.
And, oh, I do have a brief, um, comment that I made.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a guy, so the, the war being twenty ninth, just so officials are aware, uh, we have gone out and we're purchasing. You know, two hundred gallons of water, so each, each, and they will have their own gallon of water, so they can drink during the day. We are. My rapid deployment water poop system, um, back down buckets on, on carts to move in in case we have, people need to use it, and so we're. We're all set and ready to go and then the porta potties as well, too, so, um, we should be good over that day.
Okay, which is down for a day.
Yes, that's the plan.
But if you need to flush, you need to drink water and you need.
We'll be prepared.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you for having redundancy issues come.
Yeah. Chuck.
Um, let's see, again, you know, thank you to Allison and, and Autumn as far as, uh. Getting that grant, new grant writer coming on board, so hopefully, uh, I think it's July twenty-ninth, hopefully, she will be able to start. So she has a fair amount of grant experience and, uh, and some experience with, um, the, um. You know, locally as far as human age goes, so that's, she seems very passionate, so I think she'll. She's definitely looking forward, I think, to being a good resource for Rockham County municipal housing, mission of doing, you know, good grant work for the county itself, so. Um, the approved, uh, delegation budgets to go out, because by law they have to be sent out by thirty days to all thirty-seven, uh, municipalities. Plus Secretary of State from New Hampshire and also the D R A. Um, I keep on checking, but so far I have not seen. Yes, the R A, well, equalization surveys have not, reports have not been published. Once that's published, I know they, they do the, um, appointment percentages.
Yeah.
So then it's just a matter within rounding, doing that percentage. Multiplied by the total amount does prove to be raised by taxes and, again, within rounding, we'd be able to tell each town roughly when they have to pay. Come December seventeenth.
Yeah.
Uh, in the past, there was one town in Rockham County that had actually, um, appealed. And so there can be a strong out, appeal process, and that's what happened this time around, why the surveys have not yet been posted, though. That, that decision was, that the town actually won that appeal. Um, but that was done a while ago, so I don't know why the reports aren't yet up on the. Up on, uh, D R A's property official website, but I keep on checking periodically.
Yeah.
Because I like to do that math and I then give the information to the, you know, the commissioners.
Yes.
That way, if you are going around certain towns, you can then roll the heads up with the amount maybe that's off that came December. Um, it was a bit of a difficult payroll, this for a myriad of reasons. Um, again, people notice whether you're union or non-union, that increases, you know, should be part of this pay. Um, let's see, there is an ARPA state local fiscal recovery fund, uh, filing, actually two separate filings. One is the very long narrative, uh, on all the projects. Uh, for three, six, thirty, twenty-four, that's an annual piece, and then the regular. Financial kind of reporting through the treasury portal, so I'll be working on that. Today and next week to make sure that's all funded up and filed in plenty of time. Uh, at which time I'll also work on giving, like, the commissioners an update on the big, you know, ledger-sized paper that's like, what, five pages or whatever, with all the individual. Projects as well. Um, also ends up happening is that we have to save a copy of the annual performance narrative report on the county website as well, so that's a requirement as well, that. That goes on the county website. Um, and just reminder that, again, departments, other departments don't really have to attend per se, but there is. That, um, extra executive committee means to address six line transfers for next Friday, nine thirty, helping. Is this the last of them?
That should be it.
Yes.
And it should be.
And, and, uh, Beryl did confirm.
Why do you always have to click that?
I love, she, she did have majority, she did confirm this would be a majority, so we should be good with getting at least a minimum eleven.
All right, very good.
Good, I would question. Uh, Chuck, do we have any progress on contacting the state about raising the, uh, salary for the case manager for our grant?
Um, we did, that was part of the meeting, so there is a process how to do that. And it sounds like if it's just, if there's no change to the dollar total within the budget category, it's really just informational. That we're giving it to them. If we do need for whatever reason to rebalance between different budget categories for whatever reason. Um, then there's a process for that, too. It's like a revised, um, budget, um, template worksheet that have to be submitted to D H H. Um, template worksheet that have to be submitted to DHHS, but it seems like they're very amenable and understanding. Um, unlike other certain grant programs like uh Catherine, you're familiar with the Department of Justice, that. If there's like a a a justice assistance grant, if there's a change ten percent or more, we have to do an official GAN or grant adjustment notice. DHHS doesn't have a threshold on this grant, any basically dollar changes end up having to be submitted to them. But it does seem from talking to Wendy Altman and the finance individual with DHHS, it shouldn't be an issue. They're very supportive of this program, so they they, what they did say though, is that they don't have that. Template ready yet for the worksheet for state fiscal year twenty five, that won't be ready until August.
But they've given us the heads up that we could go, cause I'm more concerned about the the analysis and if it is. Comes to be that we wanna tweak that, that I wanna get it done, so that I can, you know. Push it, and they did give us kind of a okay, because what I'm thinking of. Uh, it is gonna fall within the salary line where we have three transporters, and it looks like we only need one, so that's that's gonna be a lie, so yes. So I think we could go ahead and do that, so we're finishing up on the analysis of that, and then I'll meet with the group to talk about what that really looks like, and then. If we're all in agreement, and it looks like we have to move, we'll go ahead and make that move, but come back to the board to it, you know.
And what they even, and what they even allowed for too, and this is brought up, was if we had, so for the fiscal year twenty twenty four portion, cause they actually broke it up. Two different budget worksheets. For the fiscal year twenty four portion, we only had it on there for the uh, for like the project manager for the grant program. If there's any monies that were left and spent from that state fiscal year twenty four budget thing, the less we'll look forward, actually.
Oh, that's good.
So that's, that's good too, so that could be another potential source.
It was, it was a very good meeting, they have all parties on there, the financial part and the person that's overseeing it on the state side of the house. Um, we all got a lot out of it, so.
Right.
So in the next week or two, will we be able to look at uh new salary?
Yeah.
For that position?
Um, by tomorrow and on the board agenda for next week.
Great, great.
And if anything, sorry, if anything changes with the official budget like narrative. What will have to happen is that the the authorized individual for the county, the chair for the board commissioners will be the one to sign off on the actual document. That would then be sent to the DHHS.
Okay. Alright, um, it'll get, swings the time, just um, uh, we're gonna go to the sheriff's office.
Good morning, um, lot going on, um Deputy Gillen has graduated from the dog school with Dundee a dog. Uh, that dog will be a patrol and narcotics, so we have two dogs that are on the road. Uh, some good news and bad news, the bad news is we've lost two dispatches. Uh, it wasn't because, two of them, it wasn't because of. Um, didn't like working here or the money or whatever, uh, one had an opportunity to go to work for another police department as a secretary. And the other one moved out from Colorado, and they, I think they're moving back to Colorado. Um, so it's unfortunate, but but the good news is that we have two dispatches that are training. Uh, we do have other applications out, and I think we have, maybe might be given another conditional offer. For another dispatcher, which would mean that we're fully full, I got a little. Got a little excited when we were like, we were gonna be fully staffed and these no, these uh, people were coming in saying they're leaving, but it's. It is what it is, it has nothing to do with the county, um, with the dispatch sector, uh, it just, they had different opportunities to go in different directions. Um. What else, I wanna thank Jude for fixing the AC here last week, the whole building went down. So, and then my office, the AC broke over a month ago, so like Catherine would come in and open up my office. Before I got here, or vice versa, before she got here, and we would get smoked out because of the heat. So they came up, they finally fixed it, and they actually told me that was gonna be so cold in there, they gave me a blanket, so. I wanna thank Jude for that.
I wanna know, did you wear the blanket?
Huh?
I wanna know, did you wear the blanket?
Don't like it, so um, I appreciate um, I appreciate everything that Jude does for the county and um. You know, we're we're lucky that we have her, um, and the people that work in engineering and maintenance, you know, taking care of this building. Especially with, you know, losing water and everything else, so um, I think that's about it. Oh, oh yeah, Jason Henry, uh, when the ice cream truck comes here, I'm going first, not you.
Thank you, alright, Pat, come on in. Morning.
Morning, everybody, um, nice to see everyone, I unfortunately, we lost uh one of our lead attorneys. To, she actually became the deputy clerk here in Superior Court, uh Megan Ryan. So she really did a phenomenal job for us, and she's gonna be a big loss, she prosecuted some really serious cases. Specialized in domestic violence, um, and sexual assault, she also did a training for us at different police departments. On strangulation and domestic violence and things like that, so a big loss and and blow for my office. Um, but I guess a gain for the court system, so we are looking to hire a lead attorney, most likely. Someone will be promoted from within, um, but we did post opposition both inside and outside the office. Um, I don't know if you saw in WMUR, we we got a really great sentence on uh an individual by the name of Todd Burnham. He was convicted after trial uh for fifteen counts of possession of child sexual abuse images. Um, he's also charged with sexually assaulting his three daughters, one of his daughter's best friends. Um, and we just added some manufacturing child sexual abuse image charges, um, so he's got multiple cases pending. Um, but we tried that first case, it was about a two week trial, myself, Rusty Chadwick and Taylor uh Bueckler. And he was convicted, we had about a six hour sentencing hearing where we called. A couple of our victims to testify at the hearing, um, and also the lead investigator in the case. And we received a fifty to a hundred year stand committed sentence. Uh, which is huge for a possession of child sexual abuse image case. So that was, you know, a big accomplishment for our office, I'm really proud of the staff here for that. Um. So, uh, we are, like I said, we're down a couple attorneys, including the lead attorney, we're down a couple of legal assistants, we're also down an advocate. So we're struggling a little bit here, but we're making things work, and we are, you know, actively interviewing people, and I suspect I'm gonna have some candidates in front of you. For your approval for assistant county attorneys within the next couple of weeks. Um, so that's about it, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Pat, uh Kathleen Stacy, morning.
Good morning, um, nothing really to report, we had a couple of big sales early this week, but other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Let me guess, Ride, Ride?
I'm sorry?
Big sales were in Ride?
One was in Ride, one was in Salem.
Oh, okay, excellent.
Actually, I'm sorry, no, 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 one was in Portsmouth, and one was in Salem, not Ride, this week. But uh, yeah, and I just got back from the uh National Association of Counties uh. Conference, it was good, it was hot as could be and humid as could be. Uh, but anyway, um, I brought back a few things, something I'm gonna give to um Jason Henry. It was interesting, Jason, they had a whole uh uh a training on second chances, it has to do with people who've been convicted of crimes. And and retraining them and getting them back into the community with jobs and so forth, to make them feel, you know, valuable again, so I, it was. It was pretty interesting, I I thought it was interesting anyway, but other than that, that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy, um, then I'll go to Leila next.
I have nothing to.
Alright, I think I got everybody, um, so let's go to uh, see, does any new business, old business, do they?
I forgot to tell you so, real quick, but uh. So I'm gonna deal this for you guys first, before I hang up in the, in our briefing room, but this is the picture I did for the night of the the ride.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we have a plaque going up, well, these are the people, and there were some more people in other places that showed up as well.
That's right.
Um, so they're very proud of being there, and we're gonna, so I got a plaque going underneath it, um, your guys' letter as well too, which will be good to all of them, but I just wanted to. Show you guys, looks good, that'll be.
Really nice.
They haven't even seen it yet, nor have they done, but.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Like that time.
Well, they might know now.
Uh, this, I I'd I'd like to know, uh, I'm not sure who's contacting Primex, I'm still. Uh, a little bit concerned with the uh transportation with residents outside, no, that's not um, that we discussed last week. Of uh the transport that is uh, when you call the insurance companies, I'm gonna make sure that we. Uh, Primex has looked at it, and that we are not liable for anything that would happen, because these people are not insured or, well, I don't know. I don't know if they're insured or or what the situation is, uh, have you contacted Primex?
Yes.
Oh, great.
I probably emailed to all of you, uh, you didn't really have a definitive answer, um, it just depends on the circumstances.
So I did read that.
Yeah, you may wanna ask.
I I think that we need more definitive answer.
Well, I think we need like a specific example.
Exactly, if an agreement, it's like you can't, the problem is, there are so many hypotheticals.
Just speak a little.
I was saying that the problem is that there's so many hypotheticals of what could be in an agreement that would have to, so it's very contract specific. However, if we wanna, if we wanna like submit an agreement that came to us and have Primax give us feedback on it. Maybe that's a place to start for, like, here are the problematic elements of A, B, C, D.
So we were presented with a letter to sign from one of those suppliers. That they said wasn't a contract, but they were looking for. I, there's no difference. We get a copy of that, and and then take that and submit it to Primex. To see in in this specific circumstance, if they feel that we would be uh liable for any potential. Hazard that might happen along the way, that would be a good example.
Right, just something.
Right, cause there were, it's, I I do call now, yet seeing the email, but the email didn't say anything, it said, yeah, well, maybe or maybe not. Yeah, so it didn't.
Uh, just to add on to, I think we should uh cross-reference and and look at uh New Hampshire business, look up to see if these businesses are in good standing. With the state of New Hampshire.
Uh, that particular one was, I did look them up, they were in good standing.
Okay.
But that's when I found out that they were running from little apartment buildings, and you know, it's it's still, I I have a question for our residents, that's all.
Yeah, okay, good. Alright, um, any other new business? So now we're gonna move on to a public comment, I do see a couple of people. We have Tim's iPad and 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 then a phone number that I cannot read from, you know. Um, so if any of the, anyone from the public wishes to speak, now's the, now's your chance and opportunity. I don't see anyone taking us up on the offer, so, but hold on, now that just moved. Okay.
Signed off, so, and with that, I move to enter into, we're gonna go into non-meeting, but first, we'll go into non-public, to non.
Yeah.
And move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety one April and three, section two regarding personnel matters.
Seconded on the motion, Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes, so thank you, everybody, appreciate all your input today. We just had a quick minute break.
Uh, what?
Okay, we're just came out of uh non-meeting and non-public, we've been told to speak a couple of motions to me.
Sure, um, so the uh first non-public was uh, I moved to seal those minutes, it was uh. Engineering and maintenance one, and I moved to seal those minutes until July eighteenth, twenty twenty five, because it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Hey, motions. On the motion, Commissioner Brodeur.
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Um, I moved to seal, we had a um personnel issue, and I moved to seal those minutes indefinitely, because. Um, it could render a proposed action ineffective, and we don't have a end date.
Seconded, seconded on the motion, Commissioner Foyle.
Yes.
Commissioner, I do, I vote yes, and just for the record, we also had a non-meeting with our attorney. Um, and that's it.
Just go minutes on that.
Nope, and I'll take a motion to adjourn if we're so done.
Second.
Been made, seconded to adjourn, we are adjourned, all those in favor say aye, aye, we are adjourned.